Chad, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Join with me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, grateful for, for all of your many blessings to us, Lord. I, I thank you for this great city of Nacogdoches, Lord, and all of the, the members of council, staff, most of all, our residents, Lord, who make this city great. I ask that you be with us in our midst tonight as we, uh, discuss challenging issues and topics that are of importance to our city, Lord. I ask that you, uh, grant us, uh, clear-headedness and, uh, let us do what is best for our city. And I ask that you grant us strength for today and great hope for tomorrow, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the, uh, regular, uh, board meeting or city council meeting of City of Nacogdoches, August fifteenth. If you will stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, next item on the agenda is open forum. We have anyone that needs to speak? None being, no one? Okay. All right. Out of four, uh, items to be removed from the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion for approval? And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we'll get into the regular agenda. Item, uh, six A. Receive a report and hold a discussion regarding the legal requirements for staff and council members regarding political advertising and advocacy for the outcome of a bond. Corrector of Public Works. Mr. Barbour.
Mayor Council, good evening. Uh, tonight, basically, we will have, um, our bond counsel available here online to speak to you and kind of give you a short summary of the, some do's and don'ts as we move forward, hopefully, in the future with a bond application, if you vote that way. So, we've got him available to you, uh, so I will just turn it over to him to kind of talk to you and answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, just move on and then we'll come back.
Yeah, well, well, let's just, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna move on, we're gonna postpone that until we get our, our technology fixed. And we'll go to item B. Receive a presentation and hold a discussion with the Chamber of Commerce regarding I sixty-nine, economic development and infrastructure. Uh, Mr. Wayne Mitchell, president of, uh, and CEO of Nacogdoches Chamber of Commerce.
Well, good evening, Mayor Johnson and members of the city council. I want to thank you for the invitation to, to address you tonight. Uh, first of all, I want to congratulate you, our friends from, and our partners, Nedco and Larissa, and the great work you folks did with Eaton. And, uh, to be honest with you, I, I, I never anticipated that, uh, I'd be standing before you, uh, with such good news in the last couple of weeks about that. But I think it's, it's something to build on. And I think, uh, at the conclusion of my remarks tonight, I think you'll get a sense of, of where I'm going, at least in a proposal. I said, "The Path Forward" concept, which I shared with you folks, and I know I've met with some of you individually about, uh, is a, is a document I authored, authored some months ago and is a private, is a proposal for a private-public partnership to ensure that Nacogdoches County continues to be attractive for investment in the future. I presented this plan, or I, I developed this concept, uh, not as a chamber project, but it really is a community-based wide, uh, community-wide initiative. It's not designed to be a study or replace the great work that's been performed on the city's comprehensive plan and the other studies that have been completed or are currently in progress. If anything, I believe that, that, that an approach like this would complement the work already in progress in Nacogdoches. It's not, and it's, it, it is an action plan to monitor, influence, and move forward on critical issues impacting Nacogdoches. The concept came about after I heard several folks, including some in this room here tonight, uh, indi- discussed some of the challenges and opportunities we have facing us in the next few years here in Nacogdoches. Uh, the Path Forward is designed to mobilize community, uh, and human resources to initially address three areas. And I use the word initially because I think as a part of a process, if we ever decided to move forward, we'd identify other things that we could be engaged in that could help position us to be much more attractive. One is to identify what needs to be done on our end to ensure that the eventual construction of I sixty-nine is an economic catalyst and not a high-speed bypass. The good news is we have an ongoing dialogue with the folks, with, with, uh, with Tech Dot and others, but we need to do our part in order to be appropriately prepared. I lived on a federal interstate system and I recognize that when you talk about highway transportation issues on the federal and state level, they're talking twenty years out. We need to be doing our part today so that we're appropriately, uh, prepared when that, when that highway is completed. The second issue is to stay engaged with SFU, uh, with the SFU UT system to ensure that we maximize the value of the mer- that this merger offers. That means we need to establish a dialogue, not only with the new leadership and, and the existing leadership at SFA, but with our counterparts in, in, in Austin as well, uh, to make sure that, uh, they understand what we need and, and the position this university plays in this community. And the third would be to aggressively explore it in Austin and Washington, any opportunity to fund the costs of the infrastructure, uh, issues that you folks have been addressing and that we've, as a community, have been wrestling with for the last couple of years. Our goal here is to minimize the potential tax increases on businesses and residents in Nacogdoches. Washington just passed, within a recent year, a trillion-dollar stimulus bill. I'd like to think that Nacogdoches County and East Texas will get their fair share, but the only way that'll happen is if we advocate and engage on that. On the state and on the federal level, we need to engage our legislative and, and our elected officials to ensure that they understand what our priorities are and that we constantly communicate with them about our needs. We're blessed in Nacogdoches County with a wealth of individuals that have key relationships with state and national leaders. Some are in this room tonight, including members of this city council. We need to mobilize our opinion leaders, our media representatives, others, to help keep these issues in the forefront of those that are gonna make decisions about what happens in Nacogdoches. One path forward is a way for us to harness the influential firepower in Nacogdoches to assist us in accomplishing these things. I'm relatively new, only been a resident in this community for eight years. I don't know the folks you folks know. I don't have the key relationships with folks in Austin and in Washington that you know. But having said that, I, I'm great at exploiting the talent and the relationships of others. We could do a better job in that and using our influence. There's a role for everyone to play i- uh, if they want to participate. As I indicated at the beginning, I don't view this entirely as a chamber initiative. If moving forward, someone determines there's a role for the chamber to play, we're prepared to step forward. My board is aware of the Path Forward document. Our legislative delegation on the state, local and municipal officials and others, anyone that wants to become involved in moving the needle, uh, in, in, to benefit this community should be doing that. In summary, Mr. Mayor, uh, here in Nacogdoches, there are many positive things in progress that will impact our future. We can capitalize on many of these developments. It's critical that we in Nacogdoches become more proactive. We need to work with those that I have identified in this document and those that I don't know. Uh, on, on the SFA UT issues, on Tech Dot, on, 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 on pursuing funds on a state and, and, and federal level that might mitigate some of the anticipated expenses just to maintain the, the infrastructure that we need, water and sewer and other issues. Failure to do this may result in someone outside of Nacogdoches determining what our community will look like in the future. I've seen what happens when a community isn't engaged. I just recently returned from one and the truth of matter is they're living with something that they, that frankly got by that city council. And it's sad to see what happened because when I asked those in positions of leadership how it happened, they said, "We missed it." And we can't afford to do that in Nacogdoches. In closing, like you folks, I hope to retire here. I believe we can do great things that will result in Nacogdoches being more attractive for investment, give our kids and our grandchildren the opportunity to, to stay, live, and work here. In short, working together, we, and I'm talking about just the chamber and the council, but I'm talking all of us, we can determine what Nacogdoches will look like in the future. And again, Mr. Mayor, I thank you and the members of the council for the opportunity to address you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion from the audience? Any comments? Yes.
Randy Cartwright, uh, twenty-eight oh six North Pecan Street. I was just curious where we as citizens can read the Path Forward document? I don't know if it was in the agenda or the packet. Okay. Cause that was a really long packet with us.
It's attached and under this side.
Okay.
A small version, and Wayne is right there.
Come on back up, Wayne, cause we got some questions.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I haven't probably revised that document since I drafted it five or six months ago, and part of that came as an outgrowth of some of the presentations I heard from people in this room was inspired by what I heard in this room. That document is morphed and I will provide you with an updated copy. And, uh, if, if anybody wants a copy, they can contact us at the chamber and I'd be delighted to share. It's not, it's, there's nothing in there that's confidential, uh, or, or, or publicly sensitive.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I met with Wayne shortly after I became mayor and he and I had a good conversation. And what I've said all along is, is we have counties, we have cities, we have school districts, we have Netco, and everybody does a great job. And I want the chamber to be more of a part of this. I want them to be more involved in every single thing that we do because, uh, you're supposed to be. And I, I, I hope you haven't felt like you've been left out because you're a key player in, in what we do in this community. And, uh, uh, I'll assure you from, from the city's standpoint, uh, you'll be involved and your, the chamber will be involved in, in everything because everybody's got their own strengths and everybody's got their own weaknesses. And we can all pull together and work as a team and capitalize on the strengths and make the weaknesses go away. So. I, I appreciate this offer very much. It's from the chamber, very much.
And, and the, the, the key to this would be the next steps.
Right.
Okay, if everybody buys into the concept that we need greater collaboration, we need to identify those of people of, of, that have key relationships, both in Washington, Austin, and other places, we need, we need to identify those and, and energize them and then put together a strategy and plan and make us accountable on a monthly basis. If you looked at what great things have happened, and I'll use the, the Eaton, if Larissa hadn't mobilized the resources, including your involvement, we wouldn't be talking about that today. The same with the NISD, when Alton Freely walked into my office when I was a relatively new person here and said, "We want, we want you to support a bond issue." My board, that was, they were not accustomed to doing that. And it, they showed great courage in coming on board and ultimately, I think we're all proud of the school system. I wrote an article yesterday in my newsletter about how proud we are and how much we respect what Alton Freely did and Dr. Traheo. We're proud of our system today. I, I said to a group, um, my philosophy in, in, in life and in business is always to be happy but never to be satisfied. We can always do better. We've got the resources as a town to move mountains.
Right.
But we've got to come together.
Right, absolutely. And I think my comment to you is we needed a bus driver. And, uh, we need a bus driver, so.
Need a bus driver.
Yeah.
All kidding aside, if there's a role for us to play and people are comfortable, that's fine. We have great partners and I think that's the strength that we have here. A good example of that is, you know, in a few, in a few weeks, Netco and the chamber sponsoring a relationship and how to do business, uh, with SFA under the UT system. That was an outgrowth of collaboration. That's, those are the things we can and should be doing. So, uh, I assure you that we're, we're here to help you and others that, uh, that share, share a vision for the future.
I appreciate it, and this is very, very refreshing news that, that, that unless we all work together, you know, this city's not gonna be what it's capable of being. Period.
So, I have some concrete questions, but I see my colleague Chad down there has.
I was just gonna say that I can drive a bus.
All right, you can be the bus driver.
That's good to know, Chad.
So, at the risk of being foolish here, I'm trying to summarize and wrap my, my head about, around the three, um, actually, teams that you're talking about, right? The first team, you're saying, needs to really, um, have the vision, set some goals and objectives, actually line out what needs to be done. The second team needs to be the one that go, goes and gets outside dollars and, and funding and bring it in. And the third team needs to have our own internal infrastructure. Did I summarize that at all right?
I think you did. Having the right pla- you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a, a, a big Boston Red Sox fan, and I learned a long time ago, it's not necessarily the best players, it's the right players in the right positions. Uh, and, and in this situation, I'm not at a highway or transportation. You know, Steve Bartlett's forgotten and, and Melissa, and Larissa have forgotten more about transportation issues than I will learn as it relates to Texas. I lived on I ninety-five in Maine. I did not live on, on the potential, the, the eventual build-out of I sixty-nine. I would rely on the expertise, the influence of those folks, and they need to tell us what buttons to push and what messages we need to propose. So, those three teams would be exactly that. Look, I, I, I recognize that the, the value and the impact economically of, of SFA, and I understand, I've, I've heard all of the advantages and I'm not questioning, uh, the, the, the wisdom of merging with UT. That's, please don't, there's no criticism here. It's opportunity. Is it, okay, now that we're under UT, how do we? How do we maximize this relationship so that benefits this community? I think that's the key.
So, then, my next question is operationalizing, which includes the bus driver concept, but even a little bit further. Picking the people or going out and thinking that through. Sometimes it's difficult for us because, you know, we do everything publicly and transparently and to discuss who would fit where in a public setting might not feel as great. But you might be in the, the best position to start proposing people and individuals, and we can contribute to that. I know I have met, uh, so many people in this community who are extremely talented, who, um, really would and would love to contribute but have not been asked.
And, and, and that will be the first challenge is to identify those players, those, those relationships. Who will, who will Governor Abbott call back in twenty minutes? It won't be Wayne Mitchell, cause he doesn't know me. But I suspect there's somebody in this town that if he sends, uh, uh, an email to, to the governor's office, he gets a call back in twenty minutes. In Maine, I had that luxury. I had women and men in positions of influence and had key relationships, whether they were sorority sisters or, or fraternity brothers or whatever it was. Olympia Snow, the United States Senator at the time, would call that person back. And we were able to get our message in, in timely. And we were focused like a laser beam in what we wanted. We didn't want a hundred things. We wanted maybe one or two things at any given time, but we were focused like a laser beam to accomplish those goals. And I, I jokingly said, I went back home two weeks ago to find my name on buildings. I hate to say that, but that sounds egotistical, but we built things. We need more names on buildings. And, and that, and how, how we do is we coalesce resources. And the other side is, look, now you won't agree with everything the chamber proposes, we will not agree with everything you're proposing. But guess what? We, we all have the same thing at heart. We want a great community. I want my businesses to be able to thrive, a- and I want my citizens to be able to afford. Because I, I don't have citizens, I don't have customers in my businesses. And at the same time, I'm a resident here, too. I think you do a marvelous job.
So, maybe our next step is for our new city manager, when we, when, um, that person's chosen, to sit down and really get a concrete, um, plan for fleshing out these three groups if we all agree with this concept. You're nodding there? Thank you. Our, our current hard-working, um, interim city manager is nodding. Yes, it's a good, I think it'd be great. And, um, and maybe the, the two of you can sit down and then with us providing other names, with all of us providing names of people who would fit into those groups. That might be the next.
And the key to the whole thing, my success in, in my previous position in Maine was, it's not just identifying someone with the expertise, but also the passion.
That's right.
A woman or man with passion, you can't pay enough. They're gonna do it, cause it's the right thing to do, it's in their heart. And we've got those here in Nacogdoches. We could, we can do great things. Not that you're not doing them now, but, like I said, be happy but not satisfied, so. Any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, we're talking about the, the people that, that need to be added to whatever teams or create whatever task force. Just thinking on who is already doing those things, so making sure that for, obviously for economic development, Larissa would be the person to, you know,
Absolutely.
be involved from the city's standpoint. Just making sure that we're pushing the right buttons with the people that already are the experts in our community doing those things. And I, I think we can, together, we can accomplish these great, big things that we want to do.
Absolutely. The luxury I had when, when, when I had the Board of Trade in, in Maine, and forgive me, but that was my, that was a, the, the major part of my career professionally. I'm on a twilight of my career here. There's no question about that, but I do plan on being a resident. The advantage I had is I knew which person had the expertise. I wasn't, I, I, I'm an expert i- in very little. The good news is I knew people who knew what, what they were talking about and they knew the right messages. We've got those in town here. We've got some extraordinary people.
I, I, I don't have a question, just a comment. In order for Nacogdoches not to be a high-speed bypass city, it's gonna take the collaborative of all the HISD, I mean, NISD, county, SFA, UT, the city. With that being said, with potential investment in economic growth, brings about a change in the city. And we're gonna need some organization for someone to help convince the citizens this is the correct way to go. Because the makeup of the city's gonna change if, if it is an economic growth in Nacogdoches.
And, and Councilor Bolden, the reason I, I was reluctant to put down specific objectives, look, I got some things on my mind, I like this he has accomplished. So, it's, that's not my duty. My job is to facilitate. It's the same, really, we orchestrate, Larissa and I, that's our job. We, we're charged with making thi- helping to make things happen, not to determine what should happen. That's the citizens of Nacogdoches to determine that, and the businesses I represent, so they do have an opportunity to make a promise. So, I totally agree with you. And I'll be honest with you, when you're on a winning streak, it's kind of fun. And we can have an awful lot of fun and look back and maybe, or maybe my name will be on a building someday. Don't know. But here in Nacogdoches, I might add. But having said that, it, I totally agree with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Wayne. I appreciate it very much.
I think we're all happy but not satisfied right now.
Okay, we ready to go on, on the, uh?
I hope so. I saw you call in soon.
We'll, we'll go to, back to, uh, item A, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding the legal requirements for staff and city council members regarding political advertising and advocacy for the outcome of a bond. Bob, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, so let me introduce you. This is Robert Gransfield. He's with Norton, Full, Rose and Fulbright. He's our bond counsel, who has been creating these documents for us and helping. He's been great, y'all. So, uh, wanna let him have time with you and, and have a discussion on kind of both our ethics, ethics and advertising and the, and the way we should conduct ourselves during a bond issue. So, Bob, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. And Mayor members of the councils, great to be with you this evening. And, and the discussion really is kind of simple in many ways, you know, cause you focus on you all as public officials and the expenditure of public funds. And most of this is driven by provisions that are in the election code. And there are some things that kind of get a little bit further into the mix, which might even find themselves in the criminal code. So, we're, we're gonna talk a little bit about, you know, what, where it talks about the expenditure of public funds and what that really means to start with. And the expenditure of public funds can come in any number of different ways. It can obviously come in the form of a, the city paying for something to get produced, whether it be a newspaper article or a white paper of some sort. Or it could be the use of the city's, uh, internal communication system. It could be the use of, um, you know, resources that the city has in terms of city buildings and so on. And it's fine, just very easy for you to do things so long as you're providing just factual information. And, and when, and political advertising starts to get beyond factual information, and that's where the issues start to, to come up. So, it, it's important to kind of be thinking of that, you know, both in your official capacity and then when you, your day is over on the clock, if you will, with the council, you're just an individual John Q. Public citizen, that's a little different discussion that we can have as well. But you just need to be mindful that the things that you need to produce for the community as far as education about the bond election are, are related to, to the facts. And, and if the Ethics Commission had their way, I think they would just assume you say, "We're having a bond election on November the seventh for these seven propositions and these dollar amounts for these purposes, period, the end." And, and that's all factual, but that oftentimes doesn't really address what everybody's trying to, to get to. And you all have the unique spot of knowing a lot about the reasons that you came about with these seven propositions and so forth. So, you've gotta be mindful of presenting those from the public's perspective and the public dollar perspective in a manner that's just right. So, you know, i- if you get into the process of saying, "Look, you know, we, we wanna put out a couple of flyers that, that talks about this," and most every community does some sort of voter education pamphlet, that's fine for you to do from the city's perspective so long as it is a factual pamphlet. To the extent you start to get into things a bit more on the advocacy side, is we need to do this because, or this is great for the city because, those types of things start to bleed over into what is gonna be viewed as a political advertisement in the election code. And when you go there, sometimes you're gonna say, "Look, the city can't make that, pronounce it by itself," but some sort of political action committee that has been formed by people in the community could very well do that. So, that's a easy thought process. And I'm gonna, from time to time, stop and give you an opportunity, if you wanna stop me and interject your thoughts or questions, that'd be great. But, but you, you have the ability to say, you know, citizenry, here's why you're having the election, we're having it for these seven propositions, here's the need, here are the things the council determined to make the decisions to go forward with this, and so on and so forth. And, and then you figure out how you communicate that in the best way. And when you start saying things like, you know, "This is great for the city of Nacogdoches" or "Keep Nacogdoches great," or those kind of taglines, that's oftentimes being viewed more as advocacy than it is a factual determination. So, caution is always warranted when you have that type of thing. But the general human instinct is to say, "Look, we, we wanted to tell this because it's a real need and we figure out we have to have. We want the citizens to express their view of this, but we want to let them know how important it is for us to do that." So, so you, you all can have all kinds of discussions without really any kind of concern sitting there at the dais as your council and discussing the whys and the wherefore. That really would not be viewed as political advertising. But when you start trying to say, "Look, let's go ahead and do X, Y, and Z," and X, Y, and Z, if that's, you know, creation of publications or cable TV spots or things like that, that's where you start to bleed into that discussion. Additionally, when you're thinking about yourself just as an individual member of the community, you know, you, just because you've been elected to the council does not mean you give up your constitutional rights of free speech. And, and so be mindful of where you are and when you're making those statements, if you're gonna be making statements of advocacy. So, uh, you know, you, you have the, the ability to do this, but you're always mindful of what is the use of a city resource. So, if, for example, you said, "Look, we as the council want to put out a, a letter to the community that comes out on the city council letterhead, if you have any, uh, that was paid for by the city and typed in the city facilities and then distributed, you know, through the city's postage meter, that more than likely is gonna be viewed as political advertising." that more than likely is going to be viewed as political advertising unless it's just nothing but strictly factual." And so, you've got to be cautious about those types of things. And if you said, "Well, you know, can we go to," and I just heard the nice presentation from the chamber, "If you want to go to chamber meetings and other kind of meetings around the community, that's fine because you're doing that in your individual capacity." Staff sometimes gets into a little trickier process. So, somebody holding the position equivalent to a city manager, in many instances, is thought of as an employee involved with 365, 24/7, and really doesn't have any free time that's not paid for by the city. And so, that kind of an individual staff person has to be concerned about, you know, what they can say, do they really ever have any downtime? And so, they're always best to be serving the thought process of trying to stay just exactly with the facts as best they can. But people that don't have quite the same view of that in terms of their status, you know, then they're off on their own personal time. And when you're on your own personal time, you can spend your money, you can use your time and so forth. Just be mindful of whatever resource you have. So, you wouldn't, for example, have a get-together in the city cafeteria if you had one for the employees to advocate and give this stuff unless it was just factual. So, it's, there's a lot of different variations. But the mindful thought process is be thinking a little bit about what you guys think of it. And then remember that whatever you think about it, there's oftentimes usually somebody else on the other side of those discussions that has a different view of that. And what you end up with lots of times is a violation gets reported to the Texas Ethics Commission and that entity can review the requests and they make pronouncements, advisory opinions and the like from time to time based on the facts they presented. And they have the ability to assess fines against the people who they view, if they do view this way, that have violated those provisions of political advertising. So, I'm gonna stop there right now and see if that's eliciting any questions or thoughts that you all have that we can maybe talk a little bit about.
I have one, Bob. Okay, so when does this, when does that start? When, what you just said, when does that process start? Does it start whenever the bond's called or when does, when does?
Right, I would say it doesn't necessarily have a start and a finish. It has more of a finish than a start. I would say that by when you adopt this resolution calling the election, that's probably an easy way to think about a starting point.
Okay.
And then be thinking about, well, okay, then what's the next step for you all? Well, if you're gonna do a voter information or voter education materials, which most cities do, you've just got to be mindful of keeping that factual. To keep, because normally you want to send that through your typical city, you know, communication distribution system. But, you know, I would say, once you've called the election, it's now in play, if you will. And you've got to be mindful that that's going to be viewed potentially, as you try to articulate for that, as something that could rise to the level of being an advocate for that position. And I make that distinction with advocacy deliberately because, you know, there's nothing wrong with saying, "Look, we as a council have decided that these seven propositions make the most sense for us as a city at this particular point in time. And here's why we made that determination." But then you get into the kind of presentation of that discussion and that's where sometimes the look gets a little sticky.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out when to keep my mouth shut. You answered that. Well, we live in a small town and most of the time it's after this meeting adjourns that people come up and say, "How do you feel about this? Why are you doing this? What do you want?" Are we on the clock or are we off the clock or are we ever off the clock?
Well, you probably are off the clock, but I would be mindful of kind of where those discussions are taking place. And if they're taking place there in City Hall, for example, somebody who wants to be on the other side of that discussion might say, "Well, look, you're meeting in a city-owned building. You're paying with city dollars the use of the electricity, so you've got, you know, air conditioning and lighting coming about there." So, you're really, you know, if you're advocating for a position there in City Hall, that could be construed by somebody as political advertising in that sense. If you're just saying, "Look, you know, we did this, we have these seven propositions, we're gonna have the election on this date. Here are the early voting times, we encourage you to vote, want everybody to vote so we can get everybody's opinion." That's good, easy and safe. But then when you get into saying, says, well, when you start to dab a little bit more and just kind of say, "We really need this because," then you start to get into different questions. But you're, I would say you're on the clock, you know, during the kind of times you're in your official city council position, but you're not there 24/7 all the time. You know, it's related to the use of public funds, the expenditure of public funds. And one of the reasons why a city manager can sometimes get tagged that way, because his salary is being paid with public funds. You all, if you get any kind of payment at all, and a lot of city councils don't, a lot of them do, but they're pretty nominal in the course of the payment. But you're there on a certain period of time allotted. And when you're off the clock, if you will, then you, again, you do not lose your First Amendment rights to free speech and association and whatever opinions you have. And so, you can spend your own money, you can spend your own time and you can do your own things. You can be members of a political action committee if you want to do that. You know, if you wanted to do X, Y, and Z, you probably can do that as an individual. It's collectively when you're thinking about as a council member. So, if, for example, you were to write a communication to your citizenry to say, you know, "As the mayor, I think X." That's different than saying, "As a John Q. public, I think X." So, you want to start labeling things like your office, that starts to raise those specter questions that you've got to be sensitive about.
Thank you.
Just to make clear that I'm understanding what you're saying because you've mentioned facts several times. Now, if I'm in a community meeting with citizens and the bond issue comes up and I state the provision that's in the bond as a fact and what they're needed for, and if I make the statement needed for, is that out of line?
Well, I would say generally, no, because you're still in that situation, it sounds to me like you're acting in your own individual capacity. And if you're saying, you know, and if you're not spending public funds, well, it's all this centers around the expenditure of public funds or the use of, I'll give you an example or two just to illustrate the point. There was, you know, a city a while back that said, "Look, there was a say yes committee that had been established to promote their bond election." And they let the say yes committee come in and use their postage meter, but the say yes committee paid for all the postage that was run through there. Now, the no people got wind of that and they said, "Well, look, you're using, you know, a thing of value, a public thing of value, meaning the postage meter, even though it was being paid for by the user." And things that were being printed on that or running through that postage meter were advocating the position of voted for. You know, they got called into the district attorney's office and got the riot act read to them because they were using public funds. So, you know, if you have a situation where you just are yourself as an individual going to a meeting, clearly you have the right to do that and clearly you have the right to express your opinion. You know, and clearly if you just stick with the facts, that can be kind of boring for many people, quite honestly. Because they say, "Look, I know the election's on November the 7th and I know we've got seven propositions, but why did you all as a council decide it was important to put those seven propositions before the citizenry?" So, you should be able to answer that question, certainly in your own individual capacity. You're not, you know, printing materials and things of that nature. So, again, the whole political advertising discussion is what this oftentimes centers around, is using some sort of public funds for the promotion of something like this. Some places they will do a video, for example, and they'd go out and say, "Look, we need to do this because of X." You know, and they might show the conditions of a deteriorating building that needs to be refurbished. And that, you know, that could be factual in some respects, but it could also be viewed as advocacy by others. So, there's not necessarily a black and white line for this discussion, but it's one that you've got to be mindful of. And if you're just sticking to the facts, as I said earlier, that's easy, straightforward and safe. But more often than not, you need to put a little bit of clarification or a little more detail than just the facts. And I think if you're doing that, you know, A, in your individual capacity and B, you're not spending public funds to do that, that's just fine. But when you start to get into the kind of the gray area, then you start saying, "Well, if you spent public funds," and by that I mean, if you know, if you guys, you know, put together either individually as council members or collectively as the council, you know, communications on your letterhead and you sent that around to the citizenry, you know, then you start to raise that question where somebody else is disagreeing with it. And I'll give you one other quick illustration, then I'll shut up. You know, we had a community that said, "Look, this was a school district and they needed a new school." And they took a picture, a video of what, school was overcrowded and they took a picture of lunchtime and the lunch cafeteria was really overcrowded. Well, the no people said, "Well, you should have taken that video at 10 o'clock in the morning instead of at noon because there wasn't anybody in the cafeteria attending." And by doing it at noon, you were trying to persuade them that it was, you know, really needed. And they took a different view. Now, the courts, that particular case went to the courts and they kind of threw that out. But the point is that somebody was willing enough to raise an objection to that. So, you just have to be mindful that there's always somebody, at least that's my experience, always somebody on the other side of that discussion. And you've got to be mindful of how they're maybe thinking about that.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up a little bit on both Brad and Roy's question. Because we're in a small town, people talk to me really, most often right now in my capacity as a city council member, not as just Kathleen. So, when I do give, you know, when I speak about something, I guess, do I have to be careful that I'm being viewed in that capacity and then only stick to facts? And is that correct or am I? So, for example, Rotary, if they ask me a question in Rotary, they're not asking me because I'm a Rotarian. They're asking me because I'm city council.
Right, but I suspect when you answer, you're not saying, "As a council member, I'm giving you this answer." You're probably saying, "Just here's my personal view of this." They know you're a council member and that's all just fine. And in that capacity, you're not, doesn't sound to me like you're spending any money whatsoever. You're just giving your advice and you're giving your opinion in response to a question that is asked to you. So, you're just exercising your free constitutional rights and that is fine. And you have, you know, when you get into the process of trying to then have some sort of expenditure of public funds, and I'll keep coming back to that, is that really what the whole thing centers around? And that's more than just spending a dollar. It could be, you know, using your city-printed letterhead, for example, or use making a telephone call on a city-paid-for telephone. Those types of things is where you can sometimes find yourself getting caught in the switch. But there's absolutely nothing wrong with you getting into a Rotary meeting and you say, "Well, what do you think about this?" And you say, "Well, here's what I think about it." They know full well that you're from the council. They also know that by and large, you generally have a better briefing than most of the people in the community because you've been getting to the point of calling this election, so there was some reason and basis for it. And by your individual actions, that's just fine. It's when you start having these things that come out in some written form or video form or things like that that sometimes get people in a little bit of trouble.
That's very helpful. I think from now on, I will always start my, "Here's my personal view."
And that's what a lot of people do. They say, "Look, you know, you know, as a council member, I get exposed to a lot of things, but here's my personal perspective on this." And it's not a bad thing at all to kind of clarify that. So, you try to remove that somebody could argue, "You're doing this in some sort of official capacity, if you will."
So, I have a second question. We appointed a committee, the Capital Needs Advisory Committee, and they are not, they are staffed with our staff who do work 24 hours a day, unfortunately. Mr. Bartlett is sleepily nodding. But they are just citizens who we ask to give their time. As long as they're not using any city resources and they're using their own personal resources or resources that they've gotten from the community, then they would be actually safer to provide materials. Am I, is that correct?
That would be fair, I would say. Now, you've got to be mindful of, you know, is there a need if they're doing something, there may very well be a need for them to form some sort of a political action committee. And that's where they, a lot of advocates come in that kind of form. You know, with that, though, comes some pluses and minuses. So, you've got some reporting requirements and things like that that the election code requires. You know, if it's just a group of people that have gotten together, there's nothing wrong with that at all. And so, they can express their own views on that. So, again, just be mindful of, you know, thinking about the expenditure of some sort of a public asset. Not necessarily a dollar, but, you know, like my postage meter example or stationery or, you know, some people even say, "Meeting in City Hall itself is taboo." That's probably a little bit of an overstretch because both the plus and the minus side of those discussions can, should be able to meet in a public building. But you do kind of raise the question when those things pop up. So, just be sensitive to that. And again, the closer that you are to the factual determination, the better off you're gonna be. But there's lots of times when the facts don't really satisfy the answering question. And so, you're always sensitive to that discussion.
I have a couple of questions related to, just for clarification, we don't get paid anything as far as salary or anything like that.
Not even as the bus driver?
Maybe in my real job. And we're looking for bus drivers, I can assure you. Imagine, I'm gonna give you a hypothetical. In my section of town, my ward that I represent, I typically hold ward meetings on a fairly regular basis. Not held at City Hall, not held, I guess that, most of my meetings have been held at a public facility. But if it were somewhere else, could I hold a meeting and have discussions about the bond issue?
Absolutely, but I, you know, and the caution that I would give you would be, okay, at those meetings, have you prepared anything that you have as a handout, for example? And if you have, how did that get prepared and, you know, whose paper was that printed on? And if those things were done at City Hall and they just gave them to you to give out at your meeting, that's at least a little bit of a closer call to be concerned with. But if it's not that and you're just having your regular ward meeting, you know, and you're just talking about these things collectively with your citizenry so they can be as informed as they can be, that should be just absolutely fine.
So, what about the, if I were to print those certainly from personal funds or whatever or I got them from some other resource, what about campaign funds from our personal campaigns?
Well, those, you know, that's, on a personal campaign, that's probably going more towards your election or reelection, right? As opposed to proposition. So, I'm not sure that that would be a good use of your election dollars, your campaign dollars, because it's a little bit of an apple and an orange from what you're doing there. So, I would probably steer away from that. If it's your own personal dollars, that's again, absolutely fine. And, you know, and if there are things that are presented or just factual, as I've said earlier, that, you know, that can be done and printed at city expense, for example, and that would be fine too. You've just got to be careful, you know, because people kind of say, you know, "We need this for the betterment of the city." You know, and when you start to have these phrases that kind of get, look a lot like advocating, that's when you start to get these questions pop up.
So, you discussed a little bit about a political action committee. If that, such a group were formed, those reporting requirements are similar to what we would do in our campaigns. Those donations to those organizations are not tax deductible, are they?
You know, I honestly don't know the answer to that question that I could give you with certainty, but I think the answer is no.
That's my inclination too. It was something that someone else asked me and I wanted to make sure I asked it.
Yeah, it's not like given to the foundation at the hospital or something like that.
Yeah, I have a question if, because we've, I think we've had some instances of this where an employee of the city has gone to Rotary and different clubs here in town to advocate both for or against the bond issue. Is that something we should be aware of? Because they are speaking as representative- Because they are speaking as representatives of the city, saying, we think this bond is good or we think this bond is bad.
Yeah, the, the caution I would have there is if, if that person's like a city manager, for example, and oftentimes that is the type of person that's at those meetings, making that kind of presentation. That they are oftentimes viewed again as a 365, 24/7, being paid by the city all the time. And, and, and the advice to them would be, you know, try to keep your, your comments really related to the factual side. Oftentimes I'll see those types of discussions come where there are two or three people that are attending that same meeting. The, the paid staff person tries to say, look, we're, we're having the election on November the 7th for these seven purposes. And, you know, here's the early voting dates, here's the hours, here's where the polls are and so on, so forth. And, uh, then somebody else is with that, in my example, the city manager can, can chime in and say, and X, Y, and Z. Because they're not the same staff person as the, uh, the city manager type. And they may not be any staff person, they may just be a council member or just a, a community volunteer. But that's the caution I would provide for you when you have some staff people. It's, it's, you know, again, just because somebody might be on the other side of hearing this than you are. They might say, well, aha, they're, they're, they're using this paid person who I think doesn't really have any free time. No, that's, that's a crazy discussion because people do have personal time. But, but there certainly are people that are oftentimes viewed as being more on the clock than not.
Thank you. Okay, any, uh, public comment?
Hi, so I have a question. As a citizen, can I go to like a fire station and make a video myself? Go to like a public, um, building that is on, you know, part of the, the bond?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Okay, and
You just don't want that to be expended, you know, you don't want public funds to be involved. You don't want to say, well, here's the video I've made, city, would you distribute this through your, you know, cable TV station, if you have that, or those types of things. It would just be cost.
Right, it would just be like, you know, the citizen distributing it themselves.
Right.
Okay, my second question, if, what if that citizen was also part of the, um, advisory committee? Do they need to specify that as a citizen, I made this instead of as a committee member?
Well, it, it, it's always a good idea to have that kind of caveat to say, this is my, this is my own view of it. The committee member may not have risen up to the level of being like a council member or a city manager type.
Sure.
So, so that, that my guess is that's probably going to be okay, because they're pretty kind of unofficial. But a lot of it will depend on who's expending what dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one, uh, related to, so using the, the city email for anything, that would be a city resource that's paid for by public funds, correct?
Yes.
What about social media accounts? That are not, that are run, say individually by individual council members and not, uh, by the city?
So if, if there's not a connection, so if the city's not paying for your, and, and I'm the wrong person to ask this kind of stuff about really, but, you know, Facebook and Instagram and TikTok and whatever else they have going around these days. You know, if, if it's on your own personal dime, then it's just your own asset and that's just nothing wrong with that. You're not precluded, there's no real condition or concern there. It's just that if you had a situation where let's just say, uh, you have a, if, if the city were to provide you a, a laptop computer or a cell phone and you're going to distribute that through the city paid assets, that would be a little bit of a concern potentially. If it's just on your own personal dime and the, inner, social media is just all on your own personal side. And certainly see, social media is everywhere you turn around these days, uh, that's, that's going to be just fine.
Excellent, thank you so much. That's all my questions, Mayor.
Anybody have anything else?
Thank you, Bob, very much. Appreciate it very much.
You're quite welcome and, 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 you know, if you all get to the point of trying to put together a little voter information pamphlet or something like that, that you want to distribute. Uh, you know, as Steve knows and as Pam knows, we're, we're always welcome to try to review that and provide whatever comments we could to help if that's a benefit to you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it very much.
You're quite welcome. If you don't need me any longer, then I'll kind of sign off and you can get on about the rest of your meeting.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you, bye bye.
Okay, next item, uh, is consider approval of a resolution ordering a bond election to be held in, in the city of Nacogdoches. Making provisions for the conduct of the election and resolving other matters incident and related to such election. Mr. Bartlett.
Hello again, Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. So tonight I have, I guess, the final version of the resolution we brought to you last week. Um, and I will tell you, there were a couple of typos found since we sent it to you, nothing of any substance except, uh, one in particular in the appendix. I'll bring up to you more for humor than anything, but we had a typo on an amount for the fire stations of 16 billion. Fire chief said that it was actually fine the way it was. But we have corrected, Bob found that and corrected it. So we actually have a tiny correction in the, over the one I sent you. So 16 billion would change, the, the tax numbers were correct, it's just the title was wrong. So anyway, kind of a fun change. Amazing how you can't see zeros after you type them for them or so. So tonight we have this for final adoption, if you choose to do that. Uh, and if that's the case, then we'll begin a process literally tomorrow with sending this to our elections coordinator and, uh, and starting going down the road. So be happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
One question. Do we have it broke down how much it's going to be on as far as?
Whatever the first item is, how much is that going to constitute as far as a tax increase? So each, each item, each of seven propositions in the appendices of this are broken down with kind of a sample calculation. And understand, there's variables in there. What's the interest rate in reality? What's the term in reality? But it gives, uh, the citizens information, if you have a hundred thousand dollar, um, home or asset, uh, what would your tax impact be under some given circumstance? It's like a 20-year finance at 4.75. So yes, that information is in there. Again, that will be variable till the time you sell it. But it gives them an idea, gee, is this a two cent tax rate problem or a 20 cent tax rate problem? Uh, and so I think that, hopefully that answers your question, yes. And it's in the appendix C, I believe, yes, sir.
And the total bond package is 43.7 million dollars.
It is 43.
Billion.
Hang on, let me get to my
Billion.
Billion, yeah. Yeah, billion, uh, 43, 43,990,000.
Okay.
Forty-three, nine, nine.
I'm going to say this again, and I know y'all are going to get tired of me hearing this from me. But forty-three million, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And we're talking about paying that off in 20 to 25 years. And we give one cent to our hospital district. If we had that back, we could pay that bond off in a little over four years.
Understood, Mayor.
I'm not going to say anymore. I want the people to understand where the money's going. Or we could do this out of reserves if we had that back. We are, we are strapped because of something that we did in 1993 that was never intended to be what it is now, ever. And until people in this town really get involved in what's going on in their districts and their city government, in their county government, in their school, school districts. And it's just going to be a free for all. And that's all I'm going to say right now. We'll wait till we get to the budget and then we'll talk some more.
All right, Mayor. I'll stand by for, you have public comment and be able to answer any other questions.
Any public comment? Are you on a roll tonight?
I am. I'm very involved in the bond now.
Good.
Um, so I just wanted to address the separation of the streets and the sidewalks. I don't, I think that streets and sidewalks should go together. Because the Federal Highway Commission, um, says a complete street is a safe and it feels safe for everyone using the street. That means people who are, um, walking, riding a bike, you know, driving a car. Everybody feels safe on a complete street. And according to the National Complete Streets Coalition, 1,533 jurisdictions across the United States, including two-thirds of the states, have adopted complete street policies, directing their transportation agencies to routinely plan, design, build, operate, and maintain safe street networks for everyone. Often, the real challenge of implementing complete street policies is in changing project development processes to consistently prioritize safety outcomes. To address this challenge, many jurisdictions have gone on to create new plans and complete street design models that transform their project development processes to prioritize safety for all users. And I think that having them separate in the bond is going away from this safety issue. We've had a lot of deaths in our town. We had a bicycle death last year. We've had multiple pedestrian deaths. And I think that this can be solved if we look at the street as a complete thing that involves the sidewalks. You know, the trees along the sidewalks, just everything. And I think it's a mistake to separate those in the bond. So I, I hope that you would consider that and maybe put those two things together so that we can design streets together. Because that's important for our safety of our citizens.
Brandy, were you, were you involved in the committee?
I was, I was.
That's when you should have said this.
I did, and we had it, we had it together in the committee, which is why I'm kind of bringing it up now, because it was separated after. Um, in the language portion of this, they said, well, we're going to talk to the bond people and, and so I don't, I know that they're across Texas and many other states. They have been able to put them together. But from what I understand, they were separated because they said they had to be separated. But I don't think that's the case, so maybe some clarity would be good. Or if there is particular streets or sidewalks that can't be done with the streets themselves for some reason. Maybe a downtown street that's not being, you know, fixed or something. But I, I really think they should be together because in that complete street, um, and, and we did talk about this. And it was supposed to be together as, at least as far as I remember.
Mr. Bartlett.
So she's correct. Originally, the recommendations had streets and sidewalks together. In our discussions with bond counsel and also with financial advisors and staff, as we looked at all things, we, we did pull those out specifically because, uh, we took the downtown improvements that they had recommended, pulled the sidewalks out of that and combined them. So, uh, this was certainly not a mandate, but a suggestion to separate the two and the two different propositions. So, uh, that is the way your proposition's written, it's what I presented to you last week. Um, if we're going to redo that, we'll have to come back to you with a revised proposition. So we only have until the 21st, I will say that, if, if you choose to go that route.
I'm good with it like it is.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I am too.
Did you?
I, I was just going to say, I've said it from Jump Street, that I was going to support these propositions when they came to us. This is every dollar that was asked for. I'm, I'm good.
So I move that we approve the resolution ordering a bond election as outlined in item 6C with the corrections as discussed. Does that do it for?
Second.
What were the corrections then? The billions?
The billions, two billions.
Okay, I got you. I got you, okay. Okay, all, there's a motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll go to item D, consider approval of a contract buy in between the city of Nacogdoches and SCS engineers for professional engineering services on the landfill permit modification for reconfiguration of block zero in a not to exceed amount of $60,000. Mr. Bart.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council, Case Operman, your Assistant Director of Public Works and Assistant City Engineer, uh, bringing you tonight a contract to consider with SCS engineers, uh, for engineering services for the, uh, permit modification that you mentioned earlier. Staff is continually, uh, examining our landfill, um, and our usage of it. We've been looking at upcoming expansions that we'd like to, uh, to do within the next few years, adding new cells and blocks. And one of the ways that SCS engineers, who's our, uh, been our main consultant at the landfill, uh, for, for many years, um, has, uh, advised us is to consider this, uh, permit modification to reconfigure, uh, block O, uh, out at the landfill, which is highlighted there on your, on your, uh, screen. This is a, a way for us to, um, extend the life of the landfill, um, until we, we are able to build these new cells in the next few years. It'll save us, uh, money, uh, for specifically fill dirt, which, um, could cost a couple hundred thousand dollars actually for the, for the, uh, operations that we, that we do each day. And so what SCS would do, uh, with this, uh, permit modification is basically do all the designs, calculations, updating permit drawings and, uh, prepare the actual permit modification document, uh, for, for submitted to TCEQ. Uh, they would do that for, uh, combined $55,000. And then respond to TCEQ comments on an hourly basis. So it's not a lump sum fee, but just as TCEQ has questions, they'll respond to those for us and, uh, and help get this permit, uh, to acceptance from, from the state. So, uh, the total fee that we're asking you to consider for this contract is $60,000. Uh, and we feel that it'll, uh, be a good step in, in, uh, extending the life of the landfill, uh, in the best way possible. So be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Okay, any public comment? There being none. Do I have any questions?
Case, just a question, we're talking about prolonging the life of the landfill. Under the configuration we've got now, what is our expected lifespan of the landfill?
Uh, we've got a couple of, we're, we're actually working in block P right now, actually. But we, this, uh, modification for block O is, is to, is to increase the depth essentially, so that we can get filled dirt out of it to put in block P that we're working in right now. It, it'll last us a few more years, uh, in block P, uh, at which point in time, we're, we're trying to go through another permit modification to actually build a new cell. So we've got, we, we've got years left in the landfill, uh, we're not concerned about that. But we're just trying to plan for the future and, and get decades more down the road with our planning.
How long does a cell typically last?
Several years. I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but, uh, it, you know, several five to 10 years, I'd say.
The only reason I ask is I know that other cities are not in a position to have their own landfill. And that kind of sets us apart and puts us in a better position for our residents.
Yes, the landfill's an incredible asset that we have that a lot of people, a lot of cities do not have. A lot of cities are forced to rely on waste management corporations that take care of their refuse for them. And, uh, certainly the landfills is something that we want to continue to top rate as long as we possibly can.
Yes, sir. Can our landfill, they keep talking about the city growing an entire lot, are we prepared for that?
The, the city growth?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, sir, at this point. And, uh, you know, it, we've, we've got future planning as well, uh, for potentially expanding the landfill as well, uh, over time.
How many acres do we have, do you know?
That number I don't have off the top of my head, but it's several hundred. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Uh, I can get that number for you if you'd like it.
No, I was just curious because, you know, all those houses and all these things are being built, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thanks. You ready for a motion? I'll make a motion of approval for this. I've, this is my first motion, I'm really proud of it.
I'm proud for you.
Thank you.
Without a second, apparently.
I'll second that. Without a second. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, item E, uh, consider approval of a contract buy in between the city of Nacogdoches and KSA engineers for professional
and KSA Engineers for Professional Engineering Services for farm-to-market eighteen-seventy-eight lift station improvements project for a fee not to exceed one hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Chase.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, Case Offerman again. This time asking you to consider this contract for renovation of a lift station on FM eighteen-seventy-eight. As you know, you know, the city has a robust sanitary sewer system, just under three hundred miles of total length. And it all hopefully runs downhill. But as soon as it runs out of available grade, we have to basically force that sewer back up to the high point, which is what we, what we use lift stations for. We've currently have about a dozen operational lift stations in our sewer system. And this is one that's given us a little bit of a hard time lately. It's, uh, it's been looked at for a year or so for rehabilitation. We've been spending a lot of manual time and labor kind of getting this thing to limp along. Most of the, most of the issues involved with it are capacity issues. It's no longer feasible to, to operate it with the electrical configuration that it has. It has a converter on it, 'cause it only has single-phase power instead of a three-phase. And so all that led to staff really identifying this lift station as, as a necessity to rehabilitate. And so KSA has done a lot of this type of work in the past. They're an expert in utility engineering, lift station design, et cetera. And so what we've asked them to, to do is basically develop all the plans and specifications for rebuilding this lift station. It'll include, you know, a new wet well, valve vault, site work fencing, as, as well as bringing three-phase power to the site from Encore. And so that's all been pre-vetted. It's probably in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars to build. And so their, their design fee of eighty-three thousand seven fifty is, is right in line with what, you know, market value for that type of work is. Also included in this contract is construction phase services, so project inspection and things like that. Not full-time resident project representative on-site, but periodic examination of, of how the project's going, as well as, you know, processing pay requests and, and change orders and things like that as they come up. So the total contract authorization would be one hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for this design and, and construction engineering work. So after public comment, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment? There being none.
Is there backup for that pump?
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah, there, there's, I believe, three pumps in this lift station. And so they'll go back with it.
All three of them gonna be, have maintenance done on them now, or is that just one?
It's continual right now. And then, you know, as, as they build the new one, they will again incorporate the redundancy to the lift station itself, but they'll expand the, the actual wet well itself to have more capacity and take care of those electrical issues.
Thank you.
Where is this located?
So wet, east of the loop on eighteen-seventy-eight. Uh, it's maybe a mile and a half, maybe two miles out on the, on the north side of the road.
How many sewer customers do we serve out there?
Uh, several hundred. Yes, sir.
Are there many, any more lift stations in works, in the works?
Uh, this is the only one we have identified currently for rehabilitation, but.
'Cause I heard there was one out on seven or something they were thinking about. Is that true?
I always said, well, there is one on Highway twenty-one, I believe, west of town that's giving some issues, but, you know, not on, not on Highway seven that I know of. Be happy to look into that if you'd like and get back to you, but.
Seems like there was some discussion about John Richardson Road in that area on Star that I heard about.
I, I think we, we, that was when we were talking about how it's really hard to build there because the sewage is low. I think that's what you may be referring to.
Proposed.
Right.
Yeah, but no, nothing current out there.
So is this, is this in our proposed budget for next year?
It's currently budgeted, yes, sir, in the CIP. There's, there's money there right now.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the contract in item six E.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item six F. Presentation of the proposed two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget.
Mayor, council. Tonight, you have an updated version of the budget. The only significant changes in there were, of course, in last week's meeting. Y'all advised me to make a change to our revenue estimates for sales tax. And so that was increased. I also sent y'all on that same day an updated budget that included that, but I had not had a chance at that point to actually go in and, and put the one percent COLA in each department. It was just kind of plugged and non-departmental just to get us a budget document that balanced that day. This one actually has gone back, and I have adjusted every department's salary budgets for that one percent COLA. So those are the most significant changes in this budget. The other items, there were a couple of changes in the CIP document in the very back. Now that the roof is going to be completely funded with cash reserves, since we already have two hundred thousand in the current year, that will carry over. So I reduced the amount to just seven hundred of new money. So that's been changed there. And I think that's pretty much it. Otherwise, there's, there's no significant changes to, to the documents from last week to this week. So we can go through the, the slides. The numbers have changed a little bit, because like I said, the revenues have, have increased by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars since the last time. Did not significantly change your percentages of those revenue sources. So this is pretty much, pretty much the same. General fund, of course, the expenditures, the one percent COLA was added, and so that number went up as well. Same thing by classifications. Capital expenditures, these all are identical to what you looked at last week, with the exception of the two hundred thousand dollars that are removed from the roof, because it is in the current budget and will carry over, so there's no need for new money. General fund, same thing. Revenues are, are identical to what you saw last week. The expenditures includes the changes for the one percent COLA, which was very nominal in the utility fund as well as the sanitation fund. No changes here in utility, except for in the CIP and the wastewater. One project was in there for the bar screens, and we had did a, a budget amendment last week for that. And what the number that showed for new money had that money in there, so I had to adjust that. So that number went down just a little bit, so that you, that you're not, we're not setting aside money that we've already done a budget amendment for this year. So that went down just a little bit. And sanitation, same, same revenues as last week. Expenditures, the only difference, of course, is the one percent COLA that was added. And there were no changes to the capital or the CIP for sanitation. Once again, this does include year two of the Step Plan for Public Safety. We did re-budget the three police officers' positions that had been frozen for the last couple of years. We included a one percent COLA for all employees. No additional employees were added this year. And the premium decrease for base health-dependent insurance coverage was decreased. Going forward, after tonight, we have the public hearing on the budget on September the fifth with the adoption afterwards. And September the twelfth, one week later, the, if we choose not to adopt the budget on the fifth, we have to adopt it on the twelfth before we do the tax rate. There'll be a public hearing on the tax rate and adopt. This, I think I mentioned last time, we are, we are proposing the no-new-revenue rate, so there is no requirement for a public hearing. But we, I think we chose last week to go ahead and do it just as a option for, for citizens to, to speak on the tax rate. But it is not an actual requirement, since we are not raising taxes this year. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, Pam, I'll tell you what. You did a good job on this. This is a real tight budget.
Well, it was, that was, it was a lot of, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears by all of our, our department managers, and so I, I appreciate that, and I know they do.
You know, it's, it's really the one percent, particularly on, on the ones that are on the lower-end pay scale. I mean, I, I think somebody told me the other day that, that made up about a dollar thirty-four a week. Or was it a day? Something like that.
It's probably a day, but it's, it's not, it's not, it's not significant.
It's not significant. And, and, and I'm gonna go back to what I've been preaching all along, you know. If we had that one cent back on sales tax, I mean, there's all sorts of things that this city could do as far as pay, as far as streets, as far as parks, as far as anything, you know. I want the people to understand, again, get involved in everything that's taxed, whether it be sales tax or ad valorem tax, it's still tax money. That's ten million dollars. Ten million dollars. So get involved in, in, in your city government, get involved in your county government, get involved in your hospital districts, find out where your money's going, you know. We're an open book. We're very transparent, and you have done a great job this year in this, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Very grateful for all the work you've done.
So you, you don't need a motion right now, or do you want?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Any public comment?
Sorry.
Okay, there being none.
For this, there's no, no action needed for this.
Adopt it on September fifth.
Right, 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 right.
Thank you, Pam.
Well, I got another item, so I'll just stay. You're not getting rid of me yet.
Okay, uh, next item is item G. City council record vote on proposed tax rate for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand four fiscal year. Director of Finance, Pam.
Matt, if you can hear me, can you put up the next item?
So tonight, the, I may have messed him up by doing that. So just to, to circle back with what we discussed last week, our taxable values this year were a little over two point three billion dollars. Once we back out the tax ceiling value of two hundred and thirty-seven million, that gives us an adjusted taxable value of a little over two billion dollars. This includes about seven million dollars in new property that was added to the roll this year. Our prior year tax rate, the current year that we're in, was fifty-one point eight five one cents per hundred-dollar valuation. The calculated no-new-revenue tax rate is forty-seven point four four five cents per hundred-dollar valuation. And the voter approval tax rate was fifty point six oh four per hundred-dollar valuation. So the proposed tax rate that has been presented and the budget is built on is the, the no-new-revenue rate of forty-seven point four four five cents per hundred-dollar valuation, which is made up in operations and maintenance component and a debt component. The new generate, the new value of seven million dollars generates an additional new value, I mean, a new revenue of thirty-three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars. Comparing the no-new-revenue rate to the, the proposed tax rate, of course, they're the same this year, so there is a zero increase in annual tax liability for an average home value. Normally, we will show those differences. This year, we are adopting the no-new, or we're proposing the no-new revenue rate, so there is no increase in the tax liability. So tonight, what we're asking you is to vote on a proposed tax rate. This does not set the tax rate. You'll remember, this just sets the maximum that we can ratify on September the twelfth. Tonight, that is a forty-seven point four four five cent per hundred-dollar valuation, which is split between an O and M rate of forty-six point three four two cents per hundred-dollar valuation and a debt rate of one point one oh three cents per hundred-dollar valuation. That is that.
Any public comment?
Okay, there being none. So we don't owe much at all, do we?
I'm sorry?
We don't owe much.
No, that, that is the ladder truck.
Yeah.
For the fire department. That's all, that's all the, the debt that's on the general fund side, yes.
Think we had that ten million dollars.
We had that too.
I move that we go find that ten million dollars and drag it.
It's out there. We gotta figure it out. We gotta figure it out. Okay. I'm a little unclear here. No new taxes, right? Stay in at the rate. Yay.
So you ready for a motion?
I am.
We do need a motion. So I'll make the motion that we actually propose the property tax rate as outlined. I'll just say as outlined. Is that okay? Instead of saying point four seven four four five per hundred-dollar valuation?
That works.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item H. Consider adoption of resolution number one three four eight dash zero eight two three authorizing the City of Nacogdoches to nominate Pilgrim's Pride Corporation to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project. Ms. Larissa.
Yes, sir. We have two items for you tonight that are the exact same program. This first item, Resolution thirteen forty-eight with Pilgrim's Pride. They are requesting to participate in this Enterprise Zone program, which is confusingly very similarly named to the Enterprise Fund program that Eden got, but is entirely different. All you have to do tonight for them to participate is adopt this resolution that nominates them. So just a little bit about the program. They currently employ fourteen hundred people at their facility on MLK and University Drive. They are planning to invest twenty-four million dollars in their facility. That would allow them to retain their fourteen hundred jobs, and they say they'll add about ten more. But importantly, they retain the many, many jobs they have there today and adds to our tax rolls. So all the resolution that you adopt tonight designates them as an enterprise project, and then that allows Pilgrim's Pride to receive a rebate from the state on the state's portion of their sales tax. So we've talked a lot about sales tax tonight, and it is not, it has nothing to do with the city or the hospital district's sales tax. It's just that six and a quarter percent for the state. So that is the first item tonight, which is Pilgrim's Pride. Happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment? There being none? Except a motion or, or discussion?
Well, I make a motion to approve Gen item six H as it is written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, next item and the final item is consider adoption of resolution number one three four nine dash zero eight two three authorizing the City of Nacogdoches to nominate TH Healthcare Health Limited to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project.
The exact same program, but this is for TH Healthcare. We know locally as Tenet, which is the owner of Nacogdoches Medical Center Hospital. They are requesting to participate for a project to renovate their women and infant services as well as their cardiovascular and neuro spine services. Med Center employs about four hundred and sixty people in Nacogdoches. They plan to, to invest ten million dollars, broken down in about, sorry, about five, seven million. I apologize, seven million in women and infant services, and then three million in cardiovascular and neuro spine. So this is a great, again, another good project for Nacogdoches to keep these very important jobs here.
And that goes on the tax roll too, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Public comment?
Pardon me? Any public comment? I'm sorry. There being none?
Make a motion. We approve item six I as presented.
Have a motion?
A second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. That's a record. Okay. We'll now go into executive session and pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five five one, point zero eight.
551.087 and, uh, Texas Government Code Section 551.074. And we'll be back shortly. Thank you. We're back in executive session, and it is, uh, 7:46, um, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.087 and 551.074, no action. This meeting is adjourned. God bless the great city.